Mayor, could I weigh in here at the Understaffing Committees for the 911?
Um... Is that him? Oh, yeah. Uh-huh.
Um, as the council sent out the email forwarding comments from Matthew Hite on the draft interlocal agreement for 911 dispatch. And I gave you a little synopsis. I won't go through all of them for the sake of time tonight. I won't go through all those comments. I wanted Gerald's input on a couple of things. And, you know, just to restate, at the very least, that I think that this, some of the changes changed the character of the agreement really from a partnership to more of a customer-vendor relationship, which doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily bad. We have those relationships with people all the time. But in terms of, like, for instance, the issue of the director's position and that would go, the way they propose, it would go to a committee which would be a majority vote of the committee which would be controlled, designated by the county. So they effectively would have control of the director's position. And, you know, that, you know, in terms of the service that we get, and by the way, again, just so that you're aware, the issue that I focused on most carefully is the service that we are getting as part of a, part of our 911 agreement here. And to reiterate, we've had now two police chiefs, while I've been here, two police chiefs and two fire chiefs that have said, "The service is not adequate. We have service issues and we're not getting response in terms of our service issues." When we first brought those issues, or I raised those issues, at least initially, there was a, the response was, "What issues? Nobody's been complaining." When we went to then document the complaints, because we want, we'd like to get those issues resolved, there was some consternation. "Now we're looking at the issues." Well, of course, we're looking at the issues. This is about service. And 911 services, Councilman Libby says, "This is not something to mess around with. I don't care what you're paying and who you're paying it to. If you have a fire department that says, 'We're not able to do our job because of dispatch,' that's a problem. If you have a police department that says, 'We can't do our job right because of dispatch,' that's a problem." I question, I question, first of all, that, that what concerns me a little bit through this negotiation process is that there's not been a real recognition or realization that we do have issues. It's like, "Well, those aren't really issues." That's really been the response. "Those aren't really issues." When you have a partnership, and I come to you and we're partners, and I say, "We've got issues," I don't think anybody in this room would probably say, "Let's work on those issues. Let's try to understand them a little more and we'll try to address those issues." And I don't really sense that, a sense of urgency to deal with that. And this is, again, 911, as Councilman Libby says, it's very important, so there should be a sense of urgency. When you have a person, just as an example, when you have, and I saw the fire chief's response to this live and in person, when you have a, an emergency call out to Spring Hill where someone, I believe, died of a heart attack and Barstown Fire was not dispatched, and ambulance arrived and the person was dead, or pronounced dead, you know, the 10 minutes that was saved might have made a difference, it might not have, but the chief really would have liked to have had the opportunity to provide that service. And we, Barstown Fire was not dispatched. That was the one where the response was rather heated between the two dispatch and the chief. And I think that's part of the issue, too, is there's, one of the things I realize, and I'm an eternal optimist, I think things can be worked out, but there's a lot of ill will in the wind as relates to the parties. I've seen another email today where the parties were sniping at one another, and it's unfortunate because it should be treated more like a business. But what I'd like for it to have is Gerald's input on a couple of things. First of all, input in terms of, there is, they removed a section in here that talks about, "Up to this point, we have been paying, in theory, we've been paying 40% of the, you know, the total for dispatch." And in fairness, the current agreement does not address the, what happens if we terminate, what happens to the assets of the dispatch board. So I think that if we were to terminate right now, I don't think we're entitled to assets. But if we were to terminate later on, I think we should get a percentage, whatever our percentage is. If I, we have a partnership, and Councilman Williams and I have a partnership, and I provide 40%, and he provides 60%, and we terminate, he doesn't get 100% of whatever we have as a business. It just doesn't work that way. But the county feels like they, they should be entitled to the 100% value of that. Again, the current, our agreement doesn't say anything, but I think if, as we're going forward, I think that's only fair that we would get whatever percentage we put in. If we put in a fixed fee and they give you that percentage at 20%, then maybe we should only get 20%. But they proposed striking that out because they don't feel like they should have to pay for the assets. Now, I'm making their argument for them. They shouldn't have to pay for the assets if we leave. They provided a cost figure of 140, whereas we had proposed 23,800 or 22,800, I believe. They have, and that is, I'm assuming away the fee. The fee is going to be paid to 911 provider no matter what. So that amount is a set figure, don't figure that in. Over and above that, the $22,800 figure was the one, again, that we set for state police. They are asking for $144,020 or 40% of the expenses not covered by the 911 fees, whichever is lesser, which is, if they're going to go for that high figure, at least they said, "Or the lesser of the 20%, not the greater of the 40% given." Not the greater, but they said the lesser. So, you know, plugging in whatever number you want there for 144,000, that lesser figure, I like that, that less, lesser language. I'm going to propose, just so that you all know, this is not in there, but I'm going to propose some language on policies and procedures that talks about, makes it clear that the member agencies, in other words, Barstown Police should be able to designate what their policies are in terms of dispatch. Dispatch shouldn't say, "Here's how we're going to dispatch you all." Barstown Police, Barstown Fire, New Haven Fire should be able to go to, New Haven Fire, Northeast Nelson should be able to go to the dispatch center, so here's how we want to be dispatched. I think that's fundamental. And so I'm going to make that a little more clear. Again, in terms of the employees, they changed this, that where the, in terms of hiring, firing, compensation, discipline, performance review of the director, instead of Nelson County Judge Executive and the Mayor of Barstown, they proposed that it would be the same committee that we have addressing or evaluating the director, the director's position, which would be a majority appointed by, really, Nelson Fiscal Court. And again, it just changed, I think it changed the character from one of a partnership to a vendor-client. As we go forward, and as I respond to this, I would like Gerald's response to, in terms of the provision, in terms of our, the assets, number one. Number two, in terms of the director's position in particular, and the fee amount, the amount that we would be providing in the funding. And if you all can provide me some sort of input there, I will go back and...
Can I add something to yours, Tim?
Yes, sir.
He's talking about, Councilman Libby says it's of essence and it's important and that, and dispatch is vitally important. And you add to that that, as of today, I think the count was that they have saved 14 lives. Now, that is not cutting the Nelson County EMS short. Alls I'm saying is, we are added and we're helping them, and it's not saying that they would, would not have passed on, but with that added, the extra EMTs has, has been required for them to be firefighters. It is an asset to the city. I think it's vitally important. So, I mean, we're assisting EMS, because there's been times they couldn't get there in time because of, ambulance had to come from the south into town for Bloomfield. And we made it, and we provided that support for them, and I think that's important.
I agree with you.
The other thing, excuse me for a minute, the other thing is about complaints. There have been complaints filed in the last administration, but none of it, and it was documented by many different officers had filled out complaints, but to no avail, those have been destroyed or disappeared or walked off. It's, the policy of dispatching, and Tim touched on the policy of dispatching, and we should be able to go in and tell this dispatch, "This is how we want Barstown Police to be dispatched." And then you have these dispatchers, there's no set form or pattern or a chain, what word am I looking for?
Procedure policy.
Procedure policy. So what if New Haven comes in and says, "No, I don't, I don't want it. My, I don't want our two or three officers to be dispatched this way. I want it this way." Rolling Ford, they don't want to dispatch this way, they want, Nelson County Volunteers want to dispatch this way. There is no way, shape, or form can those dispatchers dispatch in, I think there's seven different agencies, is that correct, Larry? Seven different agencies to dispatch several different ways, because the way, that's the way each department wants it. It's unheard of and ridiculous. It should be a procedure in dispatching, and it should be set forth for everyone, especially police and fire. So that would be almost impossible to do by looking at it that way. I just don't think you can do that. What? You looking at me like, "What? I thought you were just going to add something."
No, you're speaking, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think that is, is any way that that could be done. And for us to go in and to, partnership is your decision, but I would love to go in business with some of you all and you give me, you give me X amount of dollars and you don't have a say. Give me $100,000 and you don't have a say. I'd love that. I'll take you, I'll do that business. Last but not least, if you do this, the cities pay the $144,020, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's for the possible, that's for the city to pay. The 911 fee, and this is Trace's numbers, that she received from Barbara today, I think, was $156,344. So that's the 911 fees. Now, our city residents are going to pay in two, two ways. One, we're going to pay the $144,020, and they're also going to pay the 911 fee that's going to be imposed, which may, could go to KSP or another dispatching agency. But we still, our city residents are going to pay that. Now, the ZERCA, which months and months ago, we received an email that said that we were supposed to pay about $51,000, $52,000 for that program. Well, now here comes the switch and bait. Trace and I got on a conference call, and it is now at 100 and, about $106,000 is what it's going to cost. Where it was, we only had, I think when Debbie gave us this bid, this money of $151,000, $152,000, she only plugged in about 15 MDT's. Well, how do you have 15? We haven't had 15 cars since when?
Or me.
When we had all of them, right?
Yeah.
So now we've got 28. So you can't, you can't go in and do a lowball and do the bait and switch, where you take the $51,000 and then you come up like, "Oh, my gosh, we've got to have these extra MDT's." Well, no, now we're at $106,000. So that's all I got to say.
Total of $106,000.
Yeah, the total on that is $406,424,000. That's what, that's what the new price tag is. And when we first got the budget from dispatch, it was $257,000, then it went to 170, then it's down to 150, now it's 140 or something, so I don't know what figures were actually. But I do know that we will be paying $406,424.
Let me make two comments related to the party. The past party, he improved my knowledge, and I have changed, my opinion have changed, and he improved my knowledge about those firefighters when they're out, and when they go out in those trucks, so he went, I'm not going into more detail, but party did improve or not. And this to Attorney Buckman, you kind of touched on something, I'm not going into no details. I have a concern, very deeply concerned on something you just, you kind of touched on a little bit. I'm going to say one word, relationship. I have very deeply concern, you know, and you kind of touched on it a few minutes ago, but I'm not going into no detail, but I have concern about that. And, and it's, no, but I said...
Okay. Yeah, my, my comments tend is that we should, we need to put that, put the language back in there about the assets if we dissolve, but it's, I mean, being silent on it, that's not any good either. But obviously, if we break up and we put 40%, and I think we should get 40% now. And then you talked about policies and procedures, you and I talked about that earlier, about kind of beefing that up and making that more specific. And then this last part about the director and who the director reports to, I guess that gets to the crux of it. When you go back to how this all started two years ago, I guess, the whole, that the two chiefs came to the mayor and said, "Hey, we've got some problems," and it goes back to the response and them being dispatched like they want and the response time and all that. So we need to keep that in focus, that if those two entities, if the fire department and the police department, if their problem is not solved in this, then we've done nothing. We have to solve that problem. They have to really think, "Yep, this is going to solve our problem. We're going to give you, bring you listen to, we're going to get our problems taken care of." And putting this other layer in here, this committee, to me, we're moving away from that. I agree, we're moving away from that. So we need to try to get that back in there for this. And I'm going to talk about a couple, one more related to this.
But you know, when you talk about the, that in there, this is not a new thing, this relationship, as Councilman Libby said, it's not new. I found a document from Mayor Hibbs, not Mayor Hibbs, from Mayor Shekels, where it was actually given to the dispatcher and to the fire department that this, you know, relationship and it's unfair how we're paying, and it has to be rectified. So it's not, it's, it even goes back to...
Yeah, and it's not so much the paying, it's the service. Dispatches serve, their, their job is to dispatch first responders. That's their, that's their, they do. And the people they're serving, the fire and police, within reason, if they're not being served, thus, thus they can't do their job, if they can't protect and serve, then we're missing. We have to solve that problem. This has to solve that problem. So, and I think some of these changes are moving in the wrong direction. So I'm going to go back and, if I may, talk about KSP. Or maybe you, let's wait until you get all your responses on this and then...
Well, I'd like to hear the other, you know, my biggest concern is that if we enter into this agreement, state of county, there's, I heard nothing about additional cost, additional upgrades. What's going to cost us to, if they have to put in additional equipment?
$144,000.
Oh, that's not going to touch it. When they, he's going to get a new computer system next year. Dean has said they need all the new computers and stuff next year.
But the way it's written, it's $144,000.
No, that's for, that's for our dispatch. That didn't say about any upgrades or...
Well, they, the way this is written, they would have to come back and ask for additional funds. This, this is a five-year agreement at 140, if, assume you approve $144,020, it would be set at $144,020 or the lesser of 40%. And if there was something over and above that, they would have to make that specific request of you all.
Right. So they're talking, they're already talking about upgrades next year. What we can do, say, "Okay, no, we're not going to play anymore. We're going, now we're going to go do something different. Now we'll go state police?" Well, maybe we can, and they have an option next year. State says, "Well, we've already let somebody else have your spot." Now we're stuck with paying $700,000 for that $1.4 million upgrade. Or we start on dispatch, which is, that's not feasible.
I'll let them run the price on that.
I, I'm just saying, if, I want something in there saying that if we go back to this agreement, that we only pay certain months and we have to approve these upgrades.
Yeah, that's...
They'll have us. I mean, they'll have us.
That's what it says.
What do you do if you, if you can't give them the money?
But it goes beyond that, you've got to look at the service, and every one of you council members met with our emergency service department heads, you're talking about, it's not the money, they're talking about service. They're talking about the liability issue, the safety of the fire, safety of police. You've got to...
There's never been no changes. I complained for three and four years. The police went on that pursuit that day at 2:45 and lost radio contact to Bullet County Line, didn't have no radio. State police had to call it for them. I've been in situations, I used my cellphone, thank God for cell phones. And it was, and I complained, it's like kicking a dead horse. I complained, and it fell on deaf ears. The phone, after a while, police officer quit complaining, because it's useless. You just call in on cellphone or you hope nothing happens.
Well, the, the one thing that I've tried to write in here, and as I was explaining to anybody listening, is that this, this agreement really kind of puts us in a position where either the service improves, or we can document that the service hasn't improved and it justifies going elsewhere.
That documentation is already happened.
Yeah, and it's...
You've got to see that.
And, and again, I, I look at this not so much from the money point of view as the, although it does concern me, Councilman Buckman, I have to say that one of the things that concerns, when I've gone and looked, I hate to even mention the fact that my wife does computer stuff for a living, and she's very, she's very high up at LGD. And when I ask her some of these things, just from the layperson point of view, you know, just, "Honey, what the..." The first thing she says is, "There's got to be strategic planning here. They should know, in this county, because technology changes, they should know what's coming down the road, three years, five years, and they should be planning for it." And when I raise these issues, either they do not know or they do not want to tell us. And neither one of those is good. If they do not know, oh, my gosh. If they know and they're not telling us, shame on them.
And, oh, my gosh.
And, oh, my gosh. But the issue of, everybody that's listened to the news recently saw that Louisville, Bullet County, they upgraded 911, Metro saved, upgraded, and they now have the ability to text, and you can get text alerts and stuff like that. Are we even looking at that? Don't know. I mean, it's, it's, that troubles me. That troubles me, just as a citizen troubles me, but it troubles me when I'm trying to negotiate something and I'm trying to put provisions, that's why I said, and I feel really justified in saying, "We need a fixed fee here." Because I don't think they really have done, as you have requested of your departments here in the city of Barstown, that they were, that they do some strategic planning for the next four years, five years, whatever it is. I don't see that that's been done. If that's been done, I think that you all should be informed, because you're funded, you're paying the bill. But I don't know that that's happening. If it is happening, we should be informed. And by the way, this does it on a yearly basis, this agreement says on a yearly basis, at the beginning of the year, each agency's got to come forward and say, "Here's what we've got planned," or "Here's what we want to happen," and that goes through the budgeting process. Try to incorporate some of that in there. But it's way too serious. It's 911. It's 911, and we've got to have good service. And, okay, you know, money's one thing, but we've got to have good service. I'm not sure that there's anybody who calls 911 that gets good service and responds and go, "I got to pay too much for that 911 call." No, they love that. And it was very important to them that day. And I think that's, that's what I kept in mind when I was doing this. So is there some consensus on the, the getting our assets upon leaving? Again, if we were to leave right now, I don't think we're entitled to anything, because that's not the agreement. But if we leave, if we enter this agreement and we leave in the future, I think that there should be some allowance for what we paid for. I think that's pretty fundamental, if it's, if it's truly a partnership. And then the other thing is, is that in terms of, if you want the person at the top of the heap, at the director's position, to be responsive to your member agencies, I think you, you might want a little more input on that. That's my opinion.
I agree. But you can't have head of dispatch tell city department heads, "You're not my boss and I don't answer to you."
Everybody works for somebody, and I would say that that director needs to be responsible to the people that are financial participants, and if we're at 40%, then we're most certainly a partner in it and probably a boss. And I agree, percentage, the first thing you mentioned, a percentage of assets, I think 40%. I don't know if that's the number you use.
Well, it probably need to be adjusted, it probably needs to be adjusted to take into the account that our percentage may be, you know, it should be our, what we put in. That's a mathematical thing. Somebody can come in and determine that, and there's language that can be drafted in there. And if we're not putting in 40%, and this is my opinion, if we're not putting in 40%, we're not entitled to 40%. If we're putting in 38.5%, that's what we're entitled to. So it's mathematical. But I think that's, that's reasonable. And last but not least, again, they have, we started off with $22,800, they've come back with $144,020, or 40%, whichever is lesser.
There's something else that you guys have to look at. There's seven other entities here, like New Haven, Bloomfield, Rolling Ford, North Nelson, Nelson County Volunteer Corporation. None of those seven entities pay anything for dispatching. Now, granted, maybe New Haven might have 10 calls a month, it still has something, it shouldn't, city taxpayers pay for their dispatching. I don't think so. There, there's a value on each call, and that value has already been set by how much per call, and I don't remember. Larry, do you remember what that is, the value of each call?
I've written out, but...
Well, the value of that call is, the price of that call has been set. So what I'm saying is, you can go back and look. And do I think it's fair that the citizens of Barstown pay for Bloomfield's dispatching, well, North Nelson's dispatching, New Haven, Rolling Ford, Nelson County Volunteer? I do not think so. I don't, I don't think that's right for the city of taxpayers. And I know it's, the burden may be placed on, on the county to do that, but I don't think it's right for the citizens of Barstown to pay for their dispatching. And I didn't mean, I had to throw that in, I wanted it all, so...
Mayor, on that, on that same point, I, I think the, the county actually has the, is going in the right direction and has the right idea about how to charge for dispatch. Because the people of New Haven, and the people in North Nelson for their fire, and all of these other agencies, they don't have to pay for dispatch because it's being paid for with their county tax dollars. So the people in, in New Haven are paying, are having their dispatch paid for out of county tax dollars, as are the people who get dispatched for North Nelson and all the other agencies. It's only one small step to take for the county to be equitable, and that is to have the dispatching for the people in the city of Barstown paid for with their county taxes, just like everybody else in the county. Every other person in the county, whether incorporated or unincorporated, has their dispatch services paid for with their county taxes. And so should we. It's not fair to people of Barstown.
All that having been said, still got a number here of $144,020.
Councilman Simpson has...
I think more so, more importantly than the money is, you said after talking to the department head, the number one thing is, is the communications and dispatch that goes to our police, fire, and what have you, however that is set up, that's got to be addressed. There's not any talking about a lot of this stuff, if, and I think I've heard tonight, that that's not going to change. Well, if we don't, if, if some of the, the way that's been dispatched and some of these problems... the way that's been dispatched and some of these problems are not addressed, we're spinning their wheels. Now, so with that note, we, I say we have more equal power to, to the director where we've got some meat on the bone. If it's like you're saying, that, that, that at this point, it's, it's, it's gonna be, uh, somebody else is gonna tell them what to do and we turn in a complaint to that person, they don't do nothing about it, where do we go? Where does our cheese go? Where, where do we go?
Let me, let me, let me elaborate on this email that was gotten today. That dispatches now filing complaints on Barstown police officers if they don't answer the radio in time.
Well, just, maybe you can't hear them.
That's, yeah, but that's what I'm saying. That's how bad it's gotten, uh, uh, Councilman, it's, it's that bad.
They can't hear until they call you on the cellphone, on your personal cellphone, so you need, you, I can't get hold of you on the radio because the radio's so bad. Here you got a call. Give you a call on my personal cellphone.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Simpson, I'm sorry. Uh, forgive me for interrupting.
And, and, as, as far as the, uh, I, I agree with you for getting away from percentage, any percentage. We need to know what's gonna call, what is gonna call. And you lost my train of thought on my last one. It doesn't, and it doesn't matter about the cost. If we can't fix it, if it's, if, if we're not gonna be in a position where we can address these issues, I mean, it sounds like that we're gonna be exactly where we are now, and it sounds like things are not working. So if, my first would be, we've got to get some kind of agreement and we got a say in. And if we don't, if we don't have a say, I think that writing on the wall, we can't continue if the police chiefs or the, the chiefs are not getting the information and, and, uh, uh, from the way it sounds, there's a lot of that going on.
Well, the one thing that I, I've confirmed with just about everybody is, including the, the, the chief, uh, in particular the fire chief, I, I put this question in point blank as our call, may not be exactly this wording, but I said, do you care if you sit on the board? Do you care what we pay? If you got good service, would you really, would the rest of this really matter? And he said, no. No. He didn't care if he sits on the board. If he went to somebody, he could go to them and say, I have this issue, could you resolve it? Yes, sir, we sure will. And come back and say, here's what we did. And he goes, that's great. If you did that, he didn't, he wouldn't care who's on the board, he wouldn't care who the director was, he wouldn't care. He probably honestly wouldn't care how much you spent on it, you know, but that's, to me, that's it in a nutshell.
But you're not gonna get that without agreeing with me.
Well, I don't, I don't have a lot of, right now, I don't have a lot, honestly, I said I was a, an optimist. I don't have a lot of optimism that the service will improve. Uh, uh, they've had opportunities to recognize issues and they don't want to recognize the issues. They don't wanna, they'd say, wanna say that there's not, they're, they're kinda, there's a denial. Um, is there some ray of hope? Yes, I think that in our discussions with Matthew Iton, the judge, I think that they said, yeah, we realize there's some things that need to change and I will take them at their word on that. Um.
Do y'all think they're trying to sell us a car, a used car?
I'm an optimist, Judge. I mean Judge.
There you go.
There we go. Mayor. I, I, again, I, and, and as I was talking, as Councilman Simpson was talking, maybe the option, one option would be to say that we're going to extend this agreement through the end of the year to allow them to address concerns.
I'm, I'm, I'm for that. I was gonna bring that up. Let me say, say that again. I, I think I will, um, you said extension?
Yeah, extend the agreement through the end of the year and allow them to address the concerns and see how serious they are.
I know because I tell you, time is running out and.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I, honestly, it's kinda put up or shut up time. I mean, they, they have to. And by the way, I said earlier, and I felt, I felt bad about saying at one point in a meeting, I said, it's almost like they're saying, give us the money and shut up. And let me tell you something. Through this process, I am feeling more and more that that's exactly what's happening. And understand, if it's where they've got control and we're just paying them money for a service, okay. But we pay money to the people, the people that answer, and I came to this revelation today, we pay money to a service that answers service calls for sewer, water, cable that comes, and that we pay the service, a, a, a company to do that. And let's say that we had a customer who said, I am waist deep in waste, literally waste, human waste, in my basement here. The sewer's backing up. And that person was put on hold. Then they said, yeah, you know, that sounds like it'd be a problem, let me, let me get back to you, let me call somebody. And then somebody, that person, that port customer called Jessica three days later, incensed, which they should, and said, what about this? And she said, I don't know anything about it. You call the service provider and the service provider says, no. Prove to me that there was a call. Prove to me that there was a call and, and, and then we'll talk. If they did that, boom, they'd be gone. We would no longer contract with them, probably as of that day. That's kinda what we're getting here. I mean, and again, there's some strong personalities and strong feelings of this. And again, I'm an optimist and I think that people, I think everybody wants to do a good job and do it well, but.
But you need to, uh.
I'm open to suggestions here. I, I've been told to negotiate your own, your own behalf. I'm open to suggestions.
I'm waiting to, wanting to extend this. You, uh, uh, don't say that's what we're gonna do yet because KSP has people waiting in line wanting to dispatch. So, uh, how long can I, can I hold that wolf off? I don't know. Uh, we are, we've been talking and, well, that's, that's the thing that I don't want to do. Because if we lose that, then we're obligated to pay this 406,424 dollars. And, and, uh, I, I just may want to rethink this and I will try to get an answer, uh, one day this week is how long that they will hold.
Well, here's, here's what I'd like. Um, no, you go ahead. I'm, I've already talked.
I, it's just a couple of questions. Um, in reference to, uh, the complaints and issues, do, um, did we ever set a response time to respond to the emails that were sent? And do we have anything that's contained in them? Are they on some spreadsheet? Are they on software? Or are we just spinning our wheels with that? Because you have to have some type of response. And, and there should be a time that you respond to the email that is sent to you. Regardless of who it's being sent to, you have to have a reply and then a solution. And none of that language is in there whatsoever. And so we'll, we'll never get a response because we're not asking for that response. Normally, yes, you should respond to an email. But there's no language in this agreement that says, and that needs to be in there. Um, that's part of resolutions where, you know, this is service, this is what we're expecting, and this is the time we expect it. And then what are the consequences of that action if it's not done? And, and that, that's lacking in, in the agreement. Um, in reference to the employees, uh, are you saying the, you want, um, input on the director and the employees and the dispatch or just the director?
The way it's written, the way it was originally written, it would just be the director.
Okay.
The dispatch board would make the approval of the.
Gotcha.
I don't think you need to micromanage that. And I agree with you, by the way, and it's a shame it has to go, uh, and I'm used, kinda use the planning commission as a template. Um, nothing in the, in your, in the local agreement says that if we go to Jan with an issue about Airbnb that she has to respond in so many days. She does. She does, she knows that's her job, she does it, and she's very conscientious about it. Um, don't mean to throw her under any kind of bus here, but, um, that to me, you're right and you're wrong. It should be in here because we're, we're at a point where we have to have it in here. But in the normal course of business, you shouldn't have to put that in there.
That is true, but as a service, it's, it's a service. And so that needs to be in, in the agreement. Uh, because we're at a point where we have to have it in there and that shouldn't be overlooked.
Yeah.
That, that's, um, something that's very important. I, I just wanna speak to something, um, from the first beginning. I think that, um, we truly got on the wrong foot. Uh, the first step that should have been done was, when this was brought to us, KSP, someone from KSP should have came and gave us a presentation, whether it was during a working session or an, an open session. But KSP should have came and, and gave their expert factual information about the service that they were gonna render for us. If they had done that, I, I truly don't believe that we would be sitting here having, calling in for meetings, trying to go over this for two or three months. Um, that's who needs to be here, KSP. KSP is gonna offer us a service. We need to hear from KSP. Come and give us that presentation. It's just like with any other place. You know, when, when you want a service, they come in and they explain what their service is. And they give you all the factual information. They have that information. If they're servicing, uh, Harden County, uh, Spencer County, whoever, they're gonna have those specific numbers. They're gonna give you that expert advice of what we need. And, and that wasn't done. So we're spinning our wheels, continuously spinning our wheels about this, and it just doesn't make any sense. I say that you need to bring KSP in here and, and, and give us a presentation. Let us hear from KSP about the information that they're, the service that they're gonna provide. I, I think that would be clear and cut. Um, I mean, we've been talking about this for three months.
I'll work on that this week.
Thank you.
And if I had that months ago, come in my office, we could have discussed that, we would have had that months ago. But I, I will, I'll get, Larry and I will get together and we'll do that this week. But you've gotta remember too, is that we have to, uh, uh, it's something that we can't delay and it's brought to my attention, is that, uh, this 106,000 dollars that we're gonna have to pay for this is urgent. Right now, uh, we're running on shoestring. Megan is being washed, boarded by information. And, uh, so it's something that we can't cut off. And if we invest, if we put this off and we go and pay the 106,000 dollars, are we gonna get what, 40% of it back? Or are we gonna get all of 106? So we, so I'll get with KSP. Larry will do that, uh, hopefully this week and we'll, we'll bring them in here. So.
They're, they're tied up with the, uh, uh, we actually had talked to them about, uh, about coming tonight, but, uh, they were tied up at the Kentucky State Fair. So as soon as the fair's over, and I've been, uh, chatting with them to, uh, with somebody from the E-Town Post and as soon as the fair's done, they'd be, uh, willing to come. And what would, have somebody, uh, from the, from the dispatch side of it, one of their, their chief dispatchers that posts for, then also somebody from the, um, from the administrative side who wrote the, uh, the actual proposal and would be involved in the memorandum of agreement. So we'll get to both sides of that.
Might even simply get a copy of the policies and procedures.
For the sake of moving this on, then, are we then on hold until, let's say, our working session or?
On the session.
Or first meeting in a second?
Let me make a comment. I agree with everything Annika did, Councilman Cochrane, it should have been a day one. My concern, you know, I had said it before, what's gonna happen? Okay, next month, this contract ends. And Kentucky State Police indicated it will take them three months for preparation. And we messing around. And this extension gonna run out. What if they don't prove us a extension? Give us a extension. That is putting, that is serious. We jeopardizing my life and everybody's life in the city of Barstown. Something's gonna have to be done between now and that deadline. You understand where it come from?
Well, I, and I think I asked that question of Larry.
Right.
And there's some, there's some provisions that I don't think they.
Right.
You know, they, the, the, the 911 lines won't be moved over tonight, there has to be a transition period. And, um, I don't think anybody would, I hope nobody would do some sort of vindictive, you know, we're not answering 911 calls.
Well, I mean, I mean, apparently between lying, what's been going on, things do not look too good, I'm serious.
Well, again, I, I, I would hope that they, they wouldn't, that that wouldn't be something that would happen, but.
Anyway.
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a, I've got a kind of a different spin on what Keisha said. She kinda stole my notes. But, uh, you know, some weeks ago, I made some, I made the comment that I talked to Joe Burrows and I really thought this KSP thing was not, not feasible. And Larry disagreed with me and I told him, I said, well, prove me wrong. Well, he called Joe a couple of times, talked to him. And in fact, I went up Friday and talked to Joe again, kinda hear it all again. I, I heard the same story, but as he said, they, they've never done it before, but as Larry has said, from, from a technology standpoint, it's possible. I mean, it, it can be done. It's, it's just, you know, they're, they're administratively, they want to go to bigger regional dispatch, but it's not impossible to do. So I got thinking about this KSP thing again, and I, I agree with what you said, but I'd like to take a little, take a step further. The, the people who are using this are the fire and police departments. They're the one who came to us with the problem. I would like for them to come to us, maybe with KSP, and explain to us how, how's this all gonna work. I want them to understand it and sell it to us that they're looking for a solution. They, and we're trying to find a solution for them. And just as you said, it's, they're the ones who know, they, they know dispatching. Rather than me trying to figure out how we're gonna move the phone lines and all that, let them understand it. Let them explain it to it. Let, let them say, yeah, this is what we want to do. The mayor apparently wants to do it. Larry thinks it's something we should do. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the fire and police that they think we ought to do it. So I'm like, they're the one who knows the problem. They know what the, the solution should be. They're the one who has to live with the solution. If we force a solution on them. So let's let them, as part of this dog and pony show, I would like for the fire and police departments to explain to us, how's all this gonna work? How, you know, if, if, if a tourist is driving down the road and calls 911 on their cellphone, where's that call go? How does it get dispatched? How does it get? So that they've thought all that through. I assume they have, maybe, maybe, but that would make me feel better making a decision. If they come to us, if they come to us with a solution and say, this will work, we've, we've studied it, we know it will work, it will make me feel better than me listening to KSP and thinking, yeah, I think it'll work. And then them, you're in the same. That's, I think that would make it, that would, that would close the loop on it.
You know, Fred, ideally, if, if, if it could be, you know, responsible, that we sit in county both, go to KSP, it would save, uh, the county in excess of over 400, 450,000 dollars.
I've said that all along.
And they, and, and then keep Medcap would have plenty of blacktop.
But anyway.
So I've been saying, if we all would go as one unit and go, and then there's one standard of dispatching, one way of dispatching and not have several different ways of dispatching.
But, but in lieu of that, I mean, we, I'm, I'm still open to considering KSP as an option. But to really consider it, I would like, I mean, to me, that makes sense.
I will have KSP here, uh, we're working on it, on the working session, uh, and.
But I really want the fire and police chiefs to buy into this and, and tell us, yep, this is gonna work. This is how this is all gonna work. This is, and somebody explain to us how we transfer the phone lines over.
You know, Fred, when we were dispatching, Bill can both dispatch a little bit. We actually were dispatching at the old police department. Uh, when a 911 call come in, and depending on if they need police or if they just need an ambulance, what you would do is you would say, hold please, push a button, it transfers directly to a phone line. It wasn't through a T-1 line, but it's through a phone line that went to EMS out here off of, uh,
Bloomfield Road?
Off of Bloomfield Road. It would transfer out to there. And that's how it went. But now what it does is they transfer it to a T-1 line, which is a commuter line. But anyway, that's, that we here, no, explaining to you.
May I have a question, Mayor? I'm, give you exactly something. If Barstown was with state police and we had a blackout here in Barstown, utility. If Barstown was with state police and we had a blackout here in Barstown, utility, who would the residents in this city will call for utilities?
For utilities?
Yeah.
We, we're paying a company now because the present dispatch would not dispatch our utilities like we used to. So we're paying a company about $28,000 to $30,000 a year to dispatch those utilities for us. In the first agreement, in the dispatch agreement when it first originated, we had an agreement that they would dispatch our utilities, which is water, sewer, uh, electric or anything like that. Then they, they had to, they wanted to cut costs, so they laid off three, uh, uh, I think three dispatchers.
Right.
And they said, "Now you all have to do your own, uh, we have to get a company to do those, uh, those after hour calls or those utility calls." So we had to hire a company and I think it's $28,000 or $30,000, $28,000? $28,000 a year to pay for this company to answer our after hours call. Up to a certain number of calls and then we'd start paying per call. But that's why we have a couple of the CSR ladies that live close. I've came in, Bartis came in, Kathy's came in. We, uh, when, when we get calls, uh, lights out during a storm, we've all come in, we, we take calls to keep the cost down from this call taking center charging us extra because we, we're going to go over our amount of calls. So, so we, we've had it all covered.
I'm kind of...
But that's been going on for quite some time now.
I'm kind of behind time. So anyway, what number would a resident call if, if they have a blackout?
They would still call 3211, I mean, uh, the, uh...
5947.
5947 and it would go to the call taking center and then they would call whoever's uncalled for the water, sewer, electric, whatever. And they would, they would call, they, just like they're doing now. But now, yeah. You just call City Hall and that's how, and that, that's not going to change.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, about the, um, the, uh, the emphasis and the driving force behind our E911 discussions, hopefully it puts me in one of them. It's all been about money. That was the first thing, Eric, am I correct? It was what it's going to cost us?
It, it started, it started out that way.
Okay.
But in the last, in the last administration, we didn't have.
I know, I'm going there.
Okay.
Okay, so it started out, uh, about money. Then there was a shift in emphasis to communication and safety issues and so forth. Okay, well, it seems to me, safety trumps money and that should have been the first concern. So anyone who is a first responder, if we're talking about lives that are in jeopardy, they have a responsibility to make us aware of the problem. I haven't heard anything about a problem until, what, this year? I've been a councilman for, you know, eight years.
There have been complaints that have been written, documented and, and given to the chain, through the chain of command and as I've said earlier, uh, those have been documented, but those documents don't exist because I guess they've been destroyed or something and, but the radio and even, uh, Tim has heard, the old fire chief, the old police chief, you hear the present fire chief, the present police chief have all said they want to get away from dispatch, they want to go to KSP or they start their own dispatch. So just, and, and what we are doing now and what the present chief and lieutenant are doing now is they're actually, if there is an issue, they want to document the complaint as it should. There is a protocol. It is a policy and procedure, uh, issue that, that, that is in place, but it's never been used and it's being used now and we're documenting, uh, complaints. Cause if you don't, how can you fix a problem? You know, some people ride on a flat tire for miles, but they don't know it and I don't know why, but you know, if you don't, if you don't hear it, I guess you just keep on going.
The, uh, just to respond to that a little bit, the, when I asked the former police chief, I haven't asked that of the current police chief or fire chief, when I asked the former police chief about that very issue, um, I said, his, he, he was, again, I've said this before, he was a strong advocate for having in-house dispatch. And when I, he never cared about the money. Never. He never mentioned one, you know? Now, I think a couple of times he said, "What are we paying for?" But he never once mentioned the money. I think that there is a dual trap here that's going on, as best I can tell. There are some people that are incensed with the, the monetary fairness of this, but there's also a track of, of service and since I have been here, that has been consistent. That has been consistent with the, the previous fire chief, previous police chief, current fire chief, current acting chief. It's been consistent and I don't know how far back beyond that. I don't know, but, but it's been very consistent and I'm not, again, you know, not to beat that dead horse, but I've never once had any of those people mention money. Not a one. They've never said, you know, that we should pay less, we should pay more. They don't, I don't think that's their concern. I think they're just interested in service and, uh, that's been my focus.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is just coming from where I'm sitting at. Um, when we, when this all started, it just seems that, um, from looking on the outside that we really don't want to do this. Um, I just, uh, that, that's just what I hear. Um, when we're sitting here and explaining things, I, I hear that, um, you know, there, there's no coming together or trying to solve anything. Um, we have you negotiating, I guess, for us, but there isn't any true, um, coming together and trying to resolve something. Clearly we have issues, but no one has put a solution behind it except to go to KSP. Um, in turn, I have had a different experience. I've had people from both departments say, um, you know, I, we, I don't want to go. So I don't know. I sat yesterday and listened to what everyone had to say, but, um, I just don't hear us trying to solve anything. All I hear is that we're, uh, trying to figure out an amount, uh, worrying about who's the, who's the directors, who the director's going to be. Clear cut how we can get to KSP. And, um, if that's the thing, I don't know why we're spinning our wheels. If, if what y'all want to do is go to KSP, why are y'all sitting here debating, you know, about this? I, I, if you're going, I mean, you, we put in, what was it? $22,000? We knew that wasn't going to work. $22,000? We knew that wasn't going to work. But we put that and we go and meet them and then we come back with this $144,000. So, I mean, what are we doing? What are we doing here?
One of the things that I, and I should make this clear too, because at the appropriate time, if you go forward, I think that, and it's not clearly, it's clearly not a bid. Uh, we're not putting this out to bid, although in theory I guess you could, but, uh, one of the things I think that if you were to approve an amount higher than that $22,000, you would need to put in your, your, at least your discussion, something in the minutes about, I think as, as justification to the least of citizens of Barstown, why you're paying more than the amount for the, the state police, which again, if you were asking me to justify it tonight, you'd say local control, local responsiveness. Um, we have people that we know and we have a day-to-day interaction with and that we, we can trust. But if you listen to what I'm saying is, is that we don't have responsiveness, we don't have control, we don't have a relationship. That's where my concern is. And can that change? I, yes, I hope and pray that it does.
Well, I want to say is the hope and prayer probably, you know, that we need a little bit more than that.
Hope and prayer is, yeah.
Um, it, it just doesn't sound like we're trying to resolve anything. We're, it just doesn't sound that way from many, many agreements. Um, it doesn't sound like we are trying to resolve anything. I mean, we, we have, we say we have all these complaints. Well, okay, you have a complaint. Did you ask for a response? Did you get a response? What was the consequence of not having a response? And we just can't say, we're not dealing with the norm. So we can't say that, well, you know, it's assumed. Nothing is assumed here. So we have to have that in writing and we, we must know, if someone makes a complaint, are they spinning their wheels? Are they just typing it up to be typing it up? What, what is the resolution? We, we have problems and issues, but we do not have a solution. The only solution I hear is KSP. So are we going to KSP or are we staying with the county? I, I just, we don't, I'm not hearing that.
With the complaints, we don't, uh, we're not getting solutions. I can tell you that.
I just, right. And I just said that you cannot get a, a solution to something if you don't get a response.
I can't help it.
And a response, you have to set the parameter and that hasn't been done. You can have standard operation procedures all you want. Are you implementing them? That has to come from both sides. That's called negotiation. I, I, I cannot see how we can spend this much time on this. We just, I mean, do, it sounds like you guys want to go with KSP. From listening to you, I mean, everything's been, it hasn't been positive. It's been borderline negative from everything I've heard tonight.
I, I've been in, in, I took it very seriously in my charge to try to work out something with the Nelson County Dispatch. Uh, I, my thought on this was and is that make it work. But it takes two to tango and, um, we can write in a bunch of stuff that requires them to do a bunch of stuff and if they decide they're not going to do it, we're no better off than we are now. And I, I've tried, I've tried to, again, and I think it's unfortunate. I agree with you. I hear what you're saying, but it's unfortunate that we have to write an agreement that forces a partnership and, and resolution and responsiveness in a relationship. That should come naturally. There should be a mutual respect. And I don't, I don't get the sense that there's a mutual respect here and, and again, the parties, you know, I'm privy to some of this, this sniping back and forth. I'm not sure that you could write in one, you know, if people just don't like each other, you're not going, it's not going to, and I'm talking about, you, you've read quotes from fiscal court, you've read quotes from the EMS director, you've read quotes from the, the dispatch director that are derogatory towards the, the city council of Barstown. And, I mean fundamentally derogatory, not factually derogatory. Well, they're not doing this and this and this. It's just, you know, and I wonder if it can work. That's where my frustration is. Um, I just, I'm an optimist.
I, I think that, I think that we need to know if it's going to work. I mean, because the relationships are, are, um, they're, they're torn right now and the trust is not there on both sides. We just can't say that it's us or them. It's both people. It's both sides. And, and we, we need to look at it from both sides and that's not what we're doing. We're, we're talking about money. We haven't even talked about saving the lives. We're talking about money. So, I mean, this is important. I've had to use that service before, so I know how important this is.
Well, Ms. Cope, uh, let me, you know, I think everyone here, you, you've had to use it. Me and Bill have delivered it on several occasions, but, uh, you know, when Councilman Lydian and, and, uh, Councilman Rollins said, "Well, you know, we haven't had complaints, so when we started going through the policy and procedures at the police department that's never, was never used, but we're using it now in documentation of complaints." And we started filing these complaints that police officers have. They now, even though we are still paying 40% of that organization and they make us file an open records request and we are 40% of that corporation, so that's what we do. So now we've been, we've been filing this and when, when, uh, I have a, a high sheriff email my commander and, and, and me and tell me, uh, Debbie, let me know every time these assholes file a complaint. I want to know. That's not good. That's not good.
And Mayor, I understand that. I understand that, but it's, it's both sides. Once again, I mean, we, we're not, we're not...
Just supply them.
An angel as well.
Supply me the material and, and, and give me what I've asked and you don't have to use that language toward, toward me or my, or my chief or my administration.
In, in reference to, um, New Haven and Bloomfield, Roland Forks, what have you, have, have you spoke with those mayors about the money that they're not paying? Because I, I, this is the second time I've heard that. Have, have you had any discussions with the mayor in Bloomfield, Rhonda Hagan, or, or the mayor in New Haven about how they came to that point of not paying or if they would pay? I mean, has any of that come into play or talked about?
As it stands right now, we're only 40%, or maybe less. That is the dispatch board. That should be the director. And you have a, that should be the director that's doing it or the, or the head of the dispatch board. But how can you when the dispatch and the other people that sit on it, board are giving the free service? Who would ask about it? It's, it's, it is the board's, it is the board's responsibility to take that up and they should, and they should step up. That is their job. I can't, I can't and will not micromanage that.